Do away with daylight savings time.
I agree with you there. I'm very happy.
Yeah.
Just stick with it.
Yeah.
It messes with my kids way too much.
Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Let's do a, let's just do a roll call vote, just to see who's present.
Presiding Commissioner Sam Bushman?
Present.
Eastern District Commissioner Jeff Helscher?
Yes.
Western District Commissioner Chris Shepherdley?
Here.
Assessor Chris Estes?
Present.
Auditor Kristen Bearhorse?
Here.
Collector Larry Vincent?
Here.
County Clerk Steve Porzmyer?
Here.
Prosecuting Attorney Mark Richardson?
Here.
Public Administrator Marilyn Smussler? Recorder Deeds Ralph Bray?
Here.
Sheriff Greg White?
Here.
Treasurer Eric Peters.
First off, did everyone get the email I sent out on Friday, I hope? That kinda gave a explanation or a history of what's happened in the Salary Commission meetings in prior years. Obviously, at least, I shouldn't say obviously, it appears there were several missteps along the way. The intent was, when Cole County came first class in 1997, to equalize the salary of several of the offices. The three commissioners would be at a different base, and the treasurer would be at a different base. And of course, the sheriff and prosecuting attorney had different statutes that have come into force since then, I assume. I don't know if those were in effect at that time or not, but they certainly-
Mine wasn't.
Yours was. They're certainly have different bases set for them by statute. Prosecutors doesn't come into effect at all by what the Salary Commission does. The sheriff's any colas or increases affect his. Is that correct?
Any colas or increases, yeah. Mine establishes a base. It established that in 1987.
Okay.
Has not been changed since.
By the way.
Duly noted. Almost as long as it's been since Royals didn't win a series.
The salaries never did get equalized in 2003 evidently. One of Cole County's elected officials got Senator Caskey to introduce legislation that would allow Cole County to equalize their salaries. That eventually ended up in court and was thrown out by Judge Callahan, as well as actions taken by the Salary Commission in 2004 and 2005. So that never, so since then, the salaries have never become equalized. The rest is pretty much as I said in here. If anybody has any questions about any of that stuff, or wants to look at Salary Commission meeting minutes, Steve has the original copy, but I have a copy of everything that's been, that has transpired. I haven't put the lawsuit in there yet, and some other information from what has transpired in other counties. If we're truly gonna try to equalize salaries at some point in time, as I think I put in here, the only way to do that would be if we, if the Salary Commission voted to take a, or to accept any colas that the county employees get until the next election cycle, and then at the next election cycle, to do increases to those elected officials that, where the salaries never were equalized. This would remedy that for most of the elected officials, but not all.
Explain to me the authority to raise one office holder's salary without raising all of the salaries.
Well, that is gonna depend on how the motion is made. Some, well, I think the motion that I believe that Steve has looked at making would base it, it would be a motion such as, this would be, his motion would be to make the, actually, he would vote to make the, those elected officials being elected in 2017 to be paid 135% of the base salary that was established in 1996 at the Salary Commission. And then two years from now, we'd make the same motion to make those 135% of the base salary in 1996. That base salary was 45,000, and that would equalize all of those offices.
So everybody, when they came into office, whoever came in on the next cycle, be it the office holder or someone else, that would go to 135% of the base salary as established in?
1996.
Seven?
Ninety-seven is when it started on?
Ninety-six is when they established it.
Okay.
And that's the year we need to go by.
So, so it applies equally across the board?
Right.
And do you have, does that affect where they are right now?
Well, for the six, well, five, I guess, and nine, in 2017, it would take them to where, to approximately where they would be if they got a 2% cola this year or came next year. They'd be a little bit above that. Mark?
Basically, you have to have an equal starting point to raise salaries, and it has to be by the same percentage for every elected official. So the only way to get the same salary increase by percentage is to go back to when the salaries were the same. And that would be 1996, when it was voted on to be a base salary.
So can we use that as our base, though? I thought that our base was our current salary.
Doesn't make any difference. I don't think, you just have to raise everybody's salary by the same percentage. So you can use an amount that was the same, right?
Yeah, we can tie it to that. I mean, that's not, we're not saying that's what everybody's base salary is now. We're just saying we're establishing the raise based on the base salary that was established in 1990, or 1996.
To get the percentage the same.
To get the percentage is the same.
It's the only way.
So it'd be as if they were getting a 2% cola this year, if that's the case, and 2% cola for 2017, this, the 135% would be a little higher than that. I don't, I don't think I could put that on.
So-
So the 135 of the 45,000, or 35, depending on who it is, would be what?
The people, you mean?
No, what would the salary be? So we're going from 45 to-
Well, let me, can I dial this copy, this real quick?
So why would we not make a motion, like now, for instance, that said that we're going to say a 5% salary increase across the board?
Because it only affects those that are elected in 2017, and that makes that gap wider of the equalized salaries.
So we're not gonna do anything for the people coming in in '17? Right, right now?
They'll get a, well, they're, they will get-
Cola.
Well, they're gonna get cola now, that 135. If they don't get cola this year or next year, they're still gonna go to that 135, which would put them where they'd have been if they'd gotten 4% plus cola. So basically, if there were no colas the next two years, it's giving them about a 4%, low over 4%.
I thought the increases had to affect all offices equally.
It's when they take, when the next person takes office.
Yeah.
So, Mark, if, if we-
Get that election cycle.
Is it within that election cycle? Because I thought, when you change the office, you change all the offices, not just the ones that were up for election. But it's when they, it's when that office came up to its cycle that they would get that raise.
This Salary Commission can only affect the salary of those office holders who write the end of 2017 by the end of 2020.
Okay.
It's about a life.
And his percentage would be the same. I mean, it would be equal for, the percentage would be equal. The amount of the raise would not, but the percentage, and that's what has to be equal, I believe, is my understanding. Everybody has to get, be given the same percentage increase.
The only way you can do that is to base it off 1996. So what I put together here was, the offices coming up, the assessor, the public administrator, treasurer, and associate commissioner, and I want 135% off, or 35% above the salary that was paid in the base salary from 1996. You can see the difference. And where you would be, over the two-year cycle before we would get to vote again, it would be, it's a 4% increase, and your salary wouldn't take effect till 2017, January. So basically, if you got a 2% cola this year, in 2017, you'd only be getting a 2% increase.
Right.
Because you can't add that on top of this.
Right.
So this is basically just a 2% increase of this, but you don't know what the commissioners will do. You don't know if they're gonna vote a cola in this year for the county employees. So just, if they do, it wouldn't be a 4% increase, it'd be a 2%.
So then if they don't, there won't be an increase?
You'll still get your 4% if you vote this in. I mean, ultimately, I mean, it's kind of a losing cycle for us, because we have to wait another three years before we can cycle in, but you guys are already ahead of us, so.
But isn't that how it happened? They'll be, this, they voted in a cola for the people taking office in the next term, and that was us. And then two years later, they were gonna come in, and they talked about, well, for those two years, those few offices were gonna be a little above, but then, when the Salary Commission came back and voted for the next election cycle, then those people would catch up, but that's when they didn't do it.
Correct.
So, I mean, that could happen again.
Well-
For starting here, you're gonna give-
Not if you base it-
On the new law, I don't think you can do that.
Well, you, if it's done, if raises are done in the future, for instance, there would be a two-year, two-year gap, which is how it should be.
That's what it was.
It never happened.
But then it didn't happen for the rest of the people.
So there's never been, there's never been just a two-year gap.
Right.
Those other six offices, or four, anyway, never caught up-
Right.
At any time.
Right. But the intention-
Right.
Was to cuss them up the next two years, but it never happened.
Right. This will do that, and if raises are given again, then there would be just a two-year gap. If they're, if they're given-
That's what they planned the last year, the last time.
If they're given based on this type of motion.
But then that's dependent on the next Salary Commission-
Yeah.
Voting to-
And the commission says they have to make-
Continue with the 35% salary increase.
Well, whatever, whatever voting they use. At that time, it could be, you could change it, as long as you base it on the same percentage every time the Salary Commission meets. Those four, those offices would be-
Cola does not affect base.
Correct. Well, no, it does now.
Does it under the new law?
Yes.
Okay. So how does this show that Associate Commissioner loses money?
They don't.
Salary, January 1st, would be, for Associate Commissioner, would be 39, 7, 12, 78, and says the current salary is 40,683,48. I don't understand.
Are they currently over the 135% of the 1997?
I don't know, I didn't-
He didn't figure that out.
I didn't.
I didn't see if I miscalculated.
I mean, it looks like the treasurer's going up a couple thousand, and the Associate Commissioner's going down a thousand.
They shouldn't.
No, they're, they would have, they would have to go up if they got 4%.
Right.
Just a math error.
Must be a math error, I need to go back there.
Sure glad you're not.
What's 35?
I see that, is that your current salary?
What's that?
Forty,063,48.
He's wrong numbers. Obviously.
The values are set, yeah. And they've set the values already. So we know.
Did they just take your salary away?
We'll already put you in.
They're at 46, 83, 48 now. They'd be 42, 327,09.
You have to move to the office and sign the affidavit.
Oh, that's not-
That's where error math errors.
You have to move to the former office and have to sign the affidavit.
Would make it 43, as the January 1st, 2017.
It'd make it 42, 327,09, I believe.
So this, this base salary here, to under the presiding, so it should be 33,83.
I used a solid flower for it, too.
So there's this math error, it'd be that 33 plus the 10.
There you go.
It would have to be on the books prior to March 1st.
Everybody'd be the 135.
Sixteen.
So it'd be-
It'd be about 42.
I'll do it this week.
I think it's, what you make now, plus the 4% would be 42, 327,09.
Correct. 42, 327.
Now, his percentage makes it slightly different, but not by much.
But how can you tie the Salary Commission in, in two years to do what you're wanting them to do now? That's what happened the last time.
You can't.
Well, you can't, but there's-
And that's why you've got, you know, somewhere a little ahead, because-
Well, hopefully, there's, I guess, hopefully, there's some feeling that, and maybe there's not, you know, some, some elected officials hopefully think that it should be equalized.
Oh, yeah, we always thought it, we always thought it should be equalized.
If they think it should be equalized, and in two years, they'll make the same, they'll vote for the same, if it passes today, they'll vote for the same motion in two years, and then it'll be equalized.
How you know they will? That's, it didn't happen the last time, that's why it's unequal.
Did you get a chance to check on that statute?
Well, I think it happened the last time, it's just the fact that there were colas in between-
Yeah.
Which created the offset, and it's still gonna happen here.
The colas they got, the colas, that first group of elected officials got, was based on their 45,000 salary.
Right.
And for the other elected officials, it was based on the 41,000 salary. And that took, that took those other elected officials up to 43,000. So when their salaries went to the 45, they lost those two colas. They lost 6%. And that's where it got off, and then it just has grown, compounded every year since then.
There you go, using big words.
So had they, had they given them the 45, and plus their 6% that they lost, then, then things would have equalized out, or been closed for a two-year period, anyway. And that's where they never got to.
37.
And then the attempt to do it in 2005 or '04 was-
We attempted to do it twice.
Right.
In '04 and '05, right? Mark?
Well, no, in '05, they tried.
Oh, that's wrong.
In '04, they attempted, in '04, they did. They approved it.
Yeah.
The commission approved it. In '05, they tried to rescind it. And you can't, you can't go back on anything. Actually, I probably, you know, when you read through all this, Al Miller had tried to bring that to their attention several times. Bill Tackett was the prosecutor at that time, and he told the Salary Commission they could do whatever they wanted, which was, clearly didn't follow statutes. And they rescinded what was done in 2004. That's what Judge Callahan threw both out, the 2004 issue, because it was unconstitutional. And I think it ended at that time, because Pee-wee didn't want to pursue it any further. There's actually appeals in here that, that did not get, that were never filed.
Well, tell me if my math's right, their base salary in '97 was 33 to less than?
Right.
Okay, so then the 135 would take them to the 44, 550.
Yeah, I went off the spreadsheet, salary spreadsheet, instead of the-
Is that correct? It's 135% of the 33.
Then that would already be correct.
Is the 30, I just want to make sure that 33 was their base in '97.
That's a lot more than 4%, though.
Do you want me to check the math on others?
There you go. Certainly.
It looks like it is more than 4%.
I was gonna say, I think it is.
So that's kind of where we're at right now. If somebody wants to make a motion, or Steve wants to make a motion, or if you want more further discussion-
Let's look at the auditor, look at the amounts first.
The other term is correct.
And I personally resent your lack of a bald spot.
But just to throw it out, there's no way we can set a new base.
Well, while we're waiting on the figures, you still doing the figures?
I'm good.
Well, I don't know that that would, would matter, because it doesn't, it doesn't give you the opportunity to equalize anything.
You can set a base two years later.
Right.
There's an additional issue going on. Can I discuss that now?
Sure.
Or is there a motion on the floor? There's an additional issue, what the sheriffs are proposing this year, and I don't have the legislation in front of me, is that all of the offices, based on the classification of the counties, you all, within your groups, set your base salaries. And there's, there's a methodology they're working on, where it's gonna be, it's gonna be negative, or zero effect on, on the county budgets, and it has to do with inmate housing and all that. But it allows each office, within the group of treasurers in the state, to set base salaries. And the sheriffs have already done it, and to be honest, I don't know what it is. And it gives, and they say, okay, that's the base salary, we start with this percentage this year, and then to change that, the Salary Commission has to vote to not implement that on every two-year, every year period, two-year period. Other than that, it's an automatic increase till you hit your basis. And, and if you all set your bases correctly, that would be a, that's a side of-
They would be set statewide?
Yes.
They would have to draw up the old Salary Commission laws.
By, by class.
No, it doesn't. It changes the base based on the office. And the office, the sheriffs, the group of sheriffs that have worked on this have already said what ours would be, and again, I don't have it in front of me. But, and it gives you an ability to get, I think the first year's a little bit more, but after that, it's ability to get to it, if, unless you vote to not do that, that, for that two-year period.
I don't see that that changes anything the Salary Commission does now.
Well, clearly, that's evident. I can't see-
It does, it votes.
Holding a county, each individual county-
The money's provided by inmate reimbursement.
For all county offices?
Not just the sheriff?
For all, that money goes to GR. And if we're increasing it by this amount, and the commissioner's organization is on board with it.
It increases theirs, too. They can set their salary, right? The same way?
Right, the commissioners set theirs, and they're already working on it. Your legislative committee's working on it. The, and you go around the room, everybody's professional group would set their base within that structure.
But then we run into the equalization thing, too?
No.
Each, each?
But no, you don't, because this is in every year, automatic, unless the Salary Commission votes to not implement it. And it's, it's outside of the normal two-year deal, because it's a separate statute, much like what they did for the prosecuting attorneys.
It's a regular schedule?
Yes.
Okay, so you vote to accept the schedule, not vote to set a specific salary?
No, you're voting for that, you know, like, if it was this time, you would vote, we're not going to allow them to take that increase.
So you don't have to worry about who's in the election cycle that year?
That's correct.
It's just a, that's just a yearly-
That's correct. And we've got sponsors supporting it. I think we still need to do this, because this may or may not go through.
Who can get a raise until two years or four years?
Right.
That's how this got messed up.
Right.
So if you, good.
And we've put a lot of work trying to get it, and we're doing it for everybody.
We have a new office and an attorney.
But you all have, you all have to do your, you all have to do your part within your group, within your legislative committee, to set that.
And we wouldn't have to mess with all this.
So the MAC conference is going to be important this year.
It's gonna be interesting.
Thank you for already voting to-
Well, that's, that's wrong.
So, we did 135%, and that goes into effect J-1, '17. Colas are still given in those years, for those two years, so how does it equalize?
It doesn't. The sheriff's bill would do it. I think that, I think-
I'm just asking about this proposal, I mean, so we-
Right, they're always gonna be equal.
I mean, so they're never, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, they're never gonna be equal.
They're gonna be close, because you still get a cola.
Get closer, but as, as colas compound, you're, you're, that gap's gonna widen.
Except everybody gets the colas. You don't wait on colas.
It's still got the same disparity between them, and it's just gonna continue.
And there's no way outside the legislature to fix that. That's what we're trying, is trying to fix that.
So if we don't vote anything in now, and two years from now, we vote to equalize?
No.
That wouldn't-
You can't, you can't change one without changing the other. I mean, it's every two years.
Everybody has to have the same percentage raise, is that what you're saying? Every elected official?
There's no way within this to fix it, within this, within the Salary Commission to fix it.
Okay, what, what if there was, okay, we, we did nothing about the increase?
If we voted to accept colas?
Accept colas.
That's, that's all that's gonna happen, then.
And then in 2017, we voted to give an increase to that group of elected officials.
For the 2018 election?
For the 2018 election. It would have to be roughly 8%, and that would equalize them.
Yeah, I just suggest we leave that math to them. But hopefully, in the meantime, this will get settled this session. What the prosecuting attorney group did was a really good thing. We just need to do the same thing as a group and provide for the funding.
The way Mark's talking, yes, you would only be increasing the people in the election cycle.
Better effective than that election cycle.
In '17, we could vote, though, to give those a percentage increase.
It's just equal for-
Those six offices coming in.
That Salary Commission would have the same requirements on the statute as this one.
For that.
Vote only on those coming up.
And it doesn't have to be the same as what they did this year, or-
No, but any percentage has to be the same across the board.
Across the board. Gotcha. That's the only way to equalize it, then, is to just take the cola, vote to accept colas if they're given, and in two years, hope that whoever the elected officials are at that time, will vote to give a percentage increase to those offices that are in that 18 election, or coming to office in 18, 18 election cycle, to equalize them.
So, I mean, I guess I'm still hung up on, what does across the board mean? Does that mean just for the people that are coming into office, or is that everybody?
The, this Salary Commission can only affect those getting elected next year, which begin their term 2017. And it can only, under the statute, approve either an increase on the same percentage across all those offices that are elected then. Or leave the same, or by two-thirds vote, decrease that percentage.
That's where I was getting hung up.
And that's what you're talking about.
When I say across the board, I think it's everybody.
Me, too.
And that's what, and that's this legislative process you're talking about.
What I'm talking about is a legislative process, it overrides this.
And then it would vote for everybody.
Yes.
Right now, the Salary Commission's stuck with just those coming in.
Right. It's the same principle as the prosecutors did, which was a good move. It was the same principle, when they, when they, when the legislature elected to affect your base, the difference is, is what we're looking at is affecting everybody's base and providing the funding mechanism for it, which makes it budget neutral.
So I make a motion not really the salary's the same as the current salary is now, for the elected officials coming in January 1st, 2017.
And are we accepting, cola would be a separate motion, then?
It'd be a separate motion.
It's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
What is the motion for?
Take, to leave the salaries the same for anybody coming into office in 20, January 1, 2017.
It's the base.
Okay. Making sure. If there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, Presiding Commissioner Sam Bushman?
Yes.
Eastern District Commissioner Jeff Helscher?
Yes.
Western District Commissioner Chris Shepherdley?
Yes.
Assessor Chris Estes?
Upstate.
Auditor Kristen Bearhorse?
Yes.
Collector Larry Vincent?
Yes.
County Clerk Steve Porzmyer?
Yes.
Prosecuting Attorney Mark Richardson?
Yes.
Public Administrator Marilyn Smutsler?
Yes.
Recorder of deeds Ralph Ray?
Yes.
Sheriff Greg White?
Yes.
Treasurer Eric Peters?
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion that the elected officials continue to take the same percentage COLA given to other county employees.
Second. It's moved and seconded to take the same percentage COLA as other county employees. Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Presiding Commissioner Sam Bushman?
Yes.
Eastern District Commissioner Joe Halscher?
No.
Western District Commissioner Chris Shepherdley?
No.
Assessor Chris Estes?
Epstein.
Auditor Kristen Beerhorst?
Yes.
Collector Larry Vincent?
Yes.
County Clerk Steve Forsmire?
Yes.
Prosecutor Attorney Mark Richardson?
Yes.
Public Administrator Marilyn Smutsler?
Yes.
Recorder of deeds Ralph Ray?
Yes.
Sheriff Greg White?
Yes.
And Treasurer Eric Peters.
So, I believe they have passed, and, you know, did. Of course, this only solves, I guess, to me, this still only solves the issue of getting the salaries equalized, still doesn't, doesn't address the, the fact that I believe, at some point in time, Colke County elected officials' salaries need to be raised.
Well, you looked at Cape Girardos. Did you send that out to everybody?
I have it. Well...
It's a pretty significant difference.
Yes. Tane County's higher, they're a smaller county, and I know there's opposition to that.
Yeah, if you don't mind me just reading it real quick, as I put my glasses on. Cape Girardeau County's probably the nearest county to us, all across the board. Presiding Commissioner makes seventy-five, four, forty-three. Associate Commissioner seventy-three, four, forty-three. County Clerk seventy-eight, four, eleven. Treasurer seventy-five, four, thirty-three. Collector seventy-five, four, thirty-three. Recorder seventy-five, four, thirty-three. I'm leaving the sixty-eight cents off on these, just so you know. Auditor seventy-five, four, thirty-three. Assessor seventy-five, four, thirty-three. Sheriff, minuscule, eighty-seven, two, forty-six. Prosecuting Attorney one, thirty-three, seven, sixteen. Part-time coroner forty-two, nine, twenty-two. And Public Administrator seventy-five, four, thirty-three. Again, a Class One county like ours, population similar, financial records, or finances similar across the board.
Can we make a pass?
If I have one, thank you.
Mayor?
I think we're in the bottom three or four in, in actually, first-class counties. There are several counties lower than, lower class than Colke County that pay their elected officials more. I'm not greedy by any sense of the means, but at the same time, there have not been any increases at all. I wouldn't advocate moving to anything near what Cape Girardeau County has, Cape County, or was it Cape Girardeau County? But at some point in the future, we have to look at increasing those salaries.
You know, for, for the sheriffs, one of the things we do is, we look at our counterparts that are police chiefs, and traditionally, they're making significantly more than we are, usually in the, similar size to this, usually in the low hundred thousand range. In, in actuality, our responsibilities are far more significant. And my opinion is, is, and it's always awkward to say, I'm not going to be here to receive, so I'm just going to go here and say it, you all are not less than your counterparts anywhere across the state, whether, whether city, whether it's municipal, or county, or state government, and you deserve to be compensated equitably with those. Move to adjourned.
It's been moved to adjourn. Is there a second?[1734.12]